Which, I don't think the businesses would mind, you know. And it has an opportunity that day, Thursday morning, daylight tomorrow. No?
I'll have a little bit of time.
You ready to enroll?
Whenever you want.
Okay. This is the only thing that you want to tackle today?
There will be.
Be some RFIs or stuff?
There will be a proclamation. Ken, you've got that number.
Yes.
So she does have her proclamation there.
After we take the measure.
It will be adopted.
Yeah. Okay. This is, this is the read it. Read it publicly.
I think so.
Well, you know what? Why don't we go through your briefing?
Yep.
And at the times change based on council's desire. Can you like correct this? And then bring it to me and we'll do it then. Thanks. Hoo-ya. Okay, everybody, thanks for coming. This is being livestreamed now. If you missed the livestream, which means anybody out here that wants to see it will be archived. Quick way to do, or to get the word out and everything being laid out by the town manager.
Link it on the Facebook page.
Thank you all for coming here and watching online. And the town manager has an update for us. We're going to tackle actions taken at the state, at the county, and then where Carolina Beach intends to go. Necking it down from top to bottom. So with that, Ed.
Bringing this up right?
Bringing this up right now for you.
Is that expression hurry up and wait?
If it, if it's not, I'll give Jeremy another second. If it's not working, we can just work off our copies. I'd love to have it up for everybody to see. I know you have.
And this will be posted?
We can, we can post afterwards, yes, sir.
With any amendments made on the times, obviously, because there's going to be some discussion on those that are laid out here in front of us.
So I'll, I'll just get started and we'll see if they can catch up as we start moving forward. So mayor council, I wanted to start with an update on the hurricane. As far as locations, we're looking at Wednesday, September 4th at 8:00 a.m. It's going to be a Cat 2, 110-plus mile an hour hurricane off of Daytona Beach, Florida. Thursday, September 5th at 8:00 a.m., it will be a Cat 2 off of Charleston. And then Thursday, September 5th at noon, it will be a point at Carolina Beach where we will be reaching the 45 mile per hour sustained winds. And that's a key point for Carolina Beach, because that's the point where we will close the bridge. Once winds are at 45, and again, that's going to be, right now, looking at September 5th at noon, Thursday, September 5th noon, we're going to be at 45. Now, if something changes, the hurricane may stall, it may speed up. It may, we've, we've done, we've been through this before where we've announced, here's the time where we're going to close the bridge. And it was nice and sunny outside and some light breeze. So we're not saying it's closing Thursday at noon. We're saying that's what the forecast is right now, is it's 45 mile per hour at noon. It could be a little earlier, it could be a little bit later. That's always a big point, so I want to reiterate that.
Which, of course, coordinated with Curie Beach Council and Emergency Manager. We don't do that in isolation.
Absolutely. And then Friday, the 6th at 8:00 a.m., there still will be a Cat 2 storm, but at that point, it will be off of Cape Hatteras. As far as a state of emergency, the clerk does have a proclamation, and that is something we've been discussing with you today. We're looking at declaring a state of emergency for the town of Carolina Beach at 5:00 p.m. today. Mandatory evacuation of Carolina Beach. And I believe Curie Beach is following suit, will be 8:00 a.m. Wednesday morning.
To begin at 8:00 a.m., Ed, correct?
Yes, sir.
People don't get the, there has been some scuttlebutt about bridge closures at 8:00, got to be off the island at 8:00. That is not the case.
Goal being all folks that are off the island by the afternoon, late afternoon on Wednesday. So that's the goal, is have them off the island. I believe the government put it out by 5:00 p.m. We will, and that's a discussion point, if you want to get some additional time for folks to get off the island, we can do that. Alcohol sales, ABC stores plan to close tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. Will, for the, for the proclamation, we'll need to discuss if you want to secure alcohol sales at some point after that.
That would be tied to our decision to possibly, and this is me, our, what I'm, you know, however we go on that, to couple the bridge closure with, um, excuse, um...
With having people off the island.
Sorry, curfew.
Right.
Yeah. To, to, to combine them, if that's what council decides.
You're going to have, Wednesday at 6:00 a.m., you're going to have sustained winds of 34-plus knots. So you're going to have pretty strong winds Thursday morning. At a, at a point fairly close to there, definitely by the 45. You'd want to look at putting, having the curfew at least in place by that point. We had put in your presentation is having the curfew in place by Wednesday evening, but you could wait and do it Thursday morning. That's something council can discuss.
Going back to the linking, the bridge closure evacuation complete with the curfew as... Yeah, and we, we should have, or it's already out, the 2 o'clock National Hurricane Center update to be followed by a 5 and an 8 every three hours. That is what was reported, or that was the status of the storm in terms of the arrival of tropical storm force winds as of 11 o'clock, as presented to, or given to us when we were up at the county. Is that correct, Ed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we will continue, so those, those decisions, we will reiterate before the end of the meeting. And you'll have an opportunity to adopt the proclamation, which Kim has, and fill in those blanks. But we're looking at a 5:00 p.m. state of emergency. 8:00 a.m. tomorrow would be our mandatory evacuation.
To begin.
And to begin, and then we would try to get people off the island by first thing Thursday morning is what I'm hearing from council. And then the bridge will be closing shortly thereafter as winds approach 45, get, reach 45 miles per hour. That's around noon on Thursday. So reentry pass sales are going to continue through tomorrow. We're planning on continuing that through 5:00 p.m. tomorrow. You do have to have proof of residency in your vehicle registration. And we are helping folks through the line. We have two lines going most of the day. As our, working around our, some breaks for our, our folks, but we're trying to keep those both open all day long. And there will also be an opportunity, if you didn't get a pass throughout the year or in the last couple of days, we will set up, plan to set up at Masonboro Commons, which is our normal spot when we reopen the bridge, where you can get a pass to reopen or to reenter.
So Ed, just to be clear on that. And there's a lot out on Facebook. You can't just come to the officer standing there and show them identification. You have to stop at Masonboro Commons first and get your reentry pass.
If you do not have yours yet, you would need to get your reentry pass at Masonboro. We always set up there, you get your reentry pass, and then you come on the island.
Right, so get your reentry pass at Masonboro Commons. Don't come straight to the bridge and try to get on with just your driver's license or ID like that.
If, and this is a part of our reentry program and our emergency response plan, is there'll be stages of how we let folks on the island. There may be a very limited time where we say, okay, residents only, or if everything's safe and there's no issues with letting people back on the island. That, it, there may be, it may not be a lot of time before we let others back on the island. So there, usually there's only a small window where you need that resident pass to get back here before we open it up to others. And that's all contingent on what the island looks like after the storm. You know, do we have safety issues in different parts of the town? Our folk, our emergency response folks will be doing assessments of the island immediately after to see if it's safe to let folks back on the island. Still not up there, so also, we wanted to talk about shelters are open Wednesday morning at 10:00 a.m. is when shelters will be available for folks to go to. Cottington Elementary is at 4321 Carolina Beach Road. That shelter will be open. Blair Elementary is at 6510 Market Street. That will be open and is a pet-friendly shelter. So that's important if you have pets and you'd want to go to Blair Elementary. They will have very limited food services at both facilities. So if you're going to one of those shelters, make sure you bring supplies with you. You will need to bring your own pillows, blankets, hygiene items, prescription medications. Those types of things, please bring with you when you go.
Another point worth making, we were told today, for the elderly who may need care, there'll be school nurses at both of those facilities, so.
Right, good point. Thank you.
Didn't we just upgrade our IT?
Our what? Our IT, yeah.
The data we needed the most is not working.
Ed, I had a couple.
Sure.
We have a lot of people that are working off the island that would like to get back on tomorrow. So if they're working, say, 7 to 7 tomorrow, and they, we have an evacuation that starts in the morning, want everyone off in the afternoon. If someone's working 7 to 7 and we haven't closed the bridge, can they get back on the island?
If the br, if they haven't closed the bridge, you absolutely can get, you can go back and forth on the island.
Okay.
Off, on and off the island. So the, the bridge closes at 45 sustained, because that's when we, the, the state, we deemed it as a safety risk, where we don't want to risk our lives or the citizens' lives that are going across that bridge. So at that point, we don't, we're deemed it unsafe, so we don't want people transient at that point. It is a fluid time, though, so if you leave, Thursday at noon is when we're anticipating those winds. It could be sooner, it could be later. We don't, it's mother nature. We can't say exactly, but we're trying, we'll try to put out the best information we can about when that is going to occur. So I also wanted to go through our emergency and disaster compensation policy. We were hoping to have this in place, and I wanted to go through the points of it. And there is some decisions I want to ask council about to make a determination on today. This would go into effect from notification of the town manager. And that, I would be looking at doing that tomorrow, 8:00 a.m., which is the same time we would activate the town's EOC. That means when we activate the EOC, that's when we're going to be here with our instant management team on site 24/7. We'll be on 12-hour shifts and, and have strike teams and task force throughout the community that are working public safety issues. Nonessential personnel will be released at that time. All essential emergency personnel would be required to work the event. And I did poll all of our department heads, and we only have a couple of essential folks that are unavailable. So we do have almost a full staffing of our emergency response folks, so that's good news. Let's see, we do have our presentation up. So I, I wanted to walk through how pay will work, because I know this was a contentious issue during the last storm. So pay for those not working the first day, if you're nonessential, or if you're essential and you just can't get here. For one day, you will see, receive administrative pay. So you will receive, there's, there's three types of, really four types of employees that we have. You have two ranges for a police officer, either one that works a 12-hour day or 10 and a half hour day. You have a fireman that are paid based on a 24-hour day, and they have their built-in rest periods in that. And then you have all the other administrative staff and departments. And that would include your administrative staffs, where you're like your, your chiefs of your fire and police department. All your public works and utilities folks would fall into a regular eight-hour day. Pay for those working the storm for the first day with, um... Or throughout the storm, you would get, if you're a police officer, or for the first day, you would, you would be made whole for the 20, um... For one day of pay plus one administrative day. So there, you are getting rewarded for being here versus if you're not here, you get one day of administrative pay. If you're, if you are here and working, you do get that administrative pay. So there is an advantage of being at town and working through the storm. That was a big, a contentious point we had last time. Is those that were not here were paid equivalent to those that are here. After the first day, we are cutting employees off. There will be no employee that'll be paid over 17 hours today. So we are requiring you take at least a seven-hour break for rest, relaxation, sleep, basically, as we require that. And this lays out how those hours would be for a police officer. They would get 12 plus an additional five hours of, of overtime that they could accrue in a 24-hour period. And exempt employees, well, the new policy will be for town manager discretion. And my recommendation was not very popular with the exempt employees was comp time. And that would be one, if, if you wanted to tell, direct me to do overtime for exempt employees, that is an option in the policy, is I could go either way. That could be very expensive for the town, so that would, that's why I was going with the comp time. And it gives me a little more flexibility later in the year.
With that, Ed, council comments?
Yeah, my comment is last year, I think we took too long taking care of our staff. We spoke about it several times, and we still prolonged that process of taking care of them immediately. I think at the end of it, we pretty much said, let's do the overtime and just eat that cost for what they're doing for our town. So me personally, I would say shoot that overtime to them, starting at day one.
Can you go back to the very first slide you had on that? I'm sorry, keep going forward, keep going till you get to the part about pay, one more. Okay, what's that, that last double asterisk? Any additional time after the first day shall be comp or vacation. So explain to me what you're meaning by that.
So if you're not working, if you're not here and you can't get here, then, then we're only paying you for that one day. After that one day, it's on you.
Okay. Okay.
We knew that that was at risk when we adopted overtime for the whole team.
Yes, sir.
Which makes sense to me that we do that again, as Joe Dan pointed out. Heck, with the timing of the storm, we may only have to do so for 48 hours, although, who really knows? If you put that into policy, does that... How does that present itself when we go for our anticipated reimbursables to FEMA? See where I'm going with that?
I talked to our consultant about that this morning to try to ensure that we would be covered. So it is a policy, it's not linked to anything other than we're doing emergency response. Like it's not linked to a specific event. Then it should be, it should be reimbursable by, by FEMA or eligible for reimbursement. There's no guarantee that will be, be reimbursed. But that, as long as we have that policy adopted, then we should be good to go.
Okay.
And so Ed, I thought we were pretty, pretty consistent last year. I know management and we, it was pointed out to us the cost, but I thought council was pretty consistent in that we'd rather pay people dollars rather than offer comp time, whether they were exempt or nonexempt. And it just had to do with the fact that, especially our exempt folks, just can't take that much comp time.
That's what I've heard is from our exempt folks, is they, they accrue vacation, and I'm no different. They, and you just can't take it. You just don't ever get to it, so.
So again, I would, my preference would be to pay the compensation in dollars rather than comp time.
Yep, same here.
Good with that.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a cost either way.
It is.
Yeah, either they accrue the time and they get paid somewhere else down the road. I know it's a hit to the budget, but we can't control the weather, so I'd rather...
Which is why we have savings.
Is that what, we're all agreed?
I'm fine with that. Ed, do you know how many days last year that we had personnel in that position? Was it four days or five?
Oh, for Florence, it was a...
Thursday, that Sunday, right?
Four or five.
I'm thinking four or five days, and I think it cost us, was it $65,000?
I believe so.
So that kind of gives you guys something to gauge it on, how many days were in the EOC.
So I, yeah, I'm fine with that. I'd rather back up and understand clearly, because the questions I get have to do with the evacuation. Mandatory, not mandatory. I understand when we close the bridge, it's, it's wind-related, but the question is if...
What he was alluding to, that now we open up to chat about that after the pay thing.
Okay.
So it looks like we're past the pay thing, Joe Dan, you know, let's go. Last page.
Are we past that?
If we can, I think I have clear direction, council wants to move forward the pay policy with paying the...
Overtime.
The overtime for the exempt employees and no other changes, we will move forward and get back to what most people here want to talk about and watching want to talk about, which is how we're moving forward with our, our state of emergency proclamation. So, well, one other item on that as well before we move forward. Debbie has completed a, does have a budget ordinance for you. And to start with the storm, it is $100,000 is what we want to put in that fund to start us off as moving forward with response for Hurricane Dorian.
And you, you've done some analytics based on that, so I'm sure the number isn't arbitrary.
It's fairly arbitrary, actually. It's, I think Hurricane Matthew, we were at 50, and Hurricane Florence, we were at 150. We're hoping, we went way over that with Florence and had to come back several times, and we're crossing our fingers and put through a dart and right in the center and said, let's do 100 and hope for the best. So I'm hoping we can make it through this hurricane and keep our costs down. But if we do have substantial damage, we will come back and at, at that time, we can come back and, and ask council for additional funds.
It's understandable.
Yep, yeah.
All right.
So we have, we do have the budget ordinance, and outside of that, we have proclamation that Kim has.
Yeah, before we get to the proclamation, I think what Steve and I were getting at is the timing of the closure. And then basically establishing a time at which mandatory evacuation.
So you wanted a budget ordinance first, is that, I mean, a budget motion to approve the budget?
It would be ordinance number 19-1121.
And is that just on the budget?
Yes, sir, that's just the budget.
So I'd make a motion to approve ordinance, or motion 19-1121, making funds available for emergency hurricane expenses.
All those in favor?
Aye. Ananmas?
So Ed, we, we understand the governor's made a blanket statement. Okay, so that word travels fast. So the question becomes if we have an evacuation at Carolina Beach, mandatory, voluntary, how does that play into, I mean, I understand when the bridge closes, but things like the rec center, you already said that's closed. You've closed Freeman Park. What, what do we need to convey to our full-time residents and those that are potentially coming here this week for a visit? So how do we tell them, you gotta go, we want you to go, we want you to stay home? What are we trying to convey?
I think the message that we want to convey is this is a serious issue with hurricane that is life-threatening winds, rain, flooding, storm surge. And there are going to be times when we are going to be hunkered down in here, and our emergency response people will not be able to get to you if you're here. So if you stay and you have, you have an issue, we may not be able to come out and help. You need to consider that. And then if you stay and we are after the storm, you may go multiple days, I don't know how long, without electricity, without water, so basics at your house. There might be a curfew in place, so you'd be restricted to your property. You would need to be prepared for that worst-case scenario if you just do decide to stay.
So just for clarity, Ed, the governor issued a mandatory evacuation of the barrier islands.
Yes, ma'am.
So just for the public, it was a little confusing to us, too, because we thought we were meeting today at 2 o'clock. Joe and I and Ed, the fire chief, were all up at the county. We had our meeting in the room, and we all said, the beach towns will get back to you this afternoon after we meet. And then we heard the announcement at the same time you did. So just for clarity, we didn't know either. So, and I understand that he has the power to do that, so we are under a mandatory evacuation, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that was, he did make that announcement when we were there at the county. And then North Carolina Emergency Management was coming out with a similar announcement, probably coinciding with our meeting right now.
But Ed, I think you ca, you summarized it. The most important thing we're trying to convey to our residents is you need to leave. If you choose to stay, you may not get assistance.
That's right.
We cannot, we cannot guarantee emergency responders responding at all times during a storm. And we may lose power, we may be out, other utilities, and you're at your own risk. So we encourage people to leave.
We're doing everything we can to prepare the island and to ensure that we can continue to provide the utilities. During the last storm, we had a boil water advisory. We came close to losing our water system for the town. So those types of things can occur during these events. They, they had similar issues in the county. We, a lot of lessons learned, we're hoping we don't do that, but that's the reality. You could be here without water.
And the other issue then, Ed, is when we close the bridge, just because the winds go back under 45 and the bridge is safe to come back, you may not open the island. As the emergency operations person, you're going to make a decision when the island can be opened, and that's based on safety issues, not just the wind speed at the bridge.
Absolutely, we will have our emergency response folks going out and checking public and private facilities to ensure that our streets are safe, everything is safe, there's not electrical lines and roads, that when people come back on the island, they're not going to put themselves in danger. So yes, we'll...
So one of the things that I asked you the other day is can we get the utilities after hour number put front and center and some emergency contact numbers front and center on the town webpage? Just as flash screen so that people are at home.
Facebook.
Or if they're off the island and they want to check in on something later, so that they're not inundating the mayor with phone calls all the time.
So I did ask, um...
Working for you, Joe.
Still anyway.
Working for you.
So we are, I want to, I think we've got that information out. If we didn't, we'll put it out, but that will be good for, until we activate the EOC to... If we didn't, we'll put it out, but that will be good for, until we activate the EOC tomorrow at zero eight hundred. Then it will be, to get to the EOC is four five eight two nine nine nine. That's the line that we'll be monitoring and you'll go through our emergency response personnel. But out in a normal workday or after hours, we do have emergency call numbers. And we will repost those numbers, that's for our own call folks, for public utilities.
If you have an EOC number, you're going to put that out there, that's the point. We need a place for the residents to, to contact in case they have a loved one here or something, they want someone to.
Yep, we'll have a central number, that will be the central number, we'll put that number back out.
And can you, just from my own memory, refresh my memory on why we initiated a curfew last year and, and what parameters you would be looking at this year, so people understand if and when you elect to initiate a curfew, what that might look like and why?
Uh, Chief, you want, you all want to help with the curfew?
But I just want to make sure the public understands.
What would trigger a curfew for you?
What, what would it look like? Why would you trigger it? What, what do we?
So there are multiple reasons and I'll address the fire side and the chief will talk about the obvious side. When we go and close the bridge, let's back up before that. So when we evacuate the island, until everybody must leave and everybody boards, then we leave. There's the obvious of people that could go around and take advantage of houses and stuff being taken. So we talked about having the curfew be established at dark. Once the storm, the wind starts blowing, we would go into a mandatory curfew on your property. When we close the bridge, it's not safe to be on the streets. Post-storm, the sun could come out, but we have power lines down, trees in the road, shingles, nails, everything. We'll hold everybody's place till the town can assess the damage and then we would lift the curfew. Then the chief will talk about his challenges.
Chief Griffin worded it perfectly. When we see somebody out and it's a curfew, we have to take into consideration that they may be there from the ferry's acts. So that's, that's just from a protection of life and property. Also, if people are out walking, even if they're just sightseeing, and our responders have to go out to assess that, we're also putting our people at risk for having to go out and we haven't fully assessed maybe some power lines down or roads that have washed out underneath. So it's also to keep first responders and town employees safe.
And some of the key things that we look at is just cause canal floods every time, right? We go out there and during a storm, you've got a lot more pressure and wind and things going on. We have man covers missing, so there's a lot of things that could go on there that cause problems. The power could be on the whole island and lines can be down, but there are generators that can backfeed those lines. So if the line that wasn't, you may not have power on the whole street, that line playing in the middle of the street could have power being backfitted from the generator. So we don't want people out till we can check them and get things moved and get due power on the island and start getting things reestablished. So that's, that's the big issue with the curfew. I know a lot of people are like, why can't we walk down to neighbor's house and check them? There's a lot of reasons. If you step on one line, you're dead. Step in a manhole in middeep water and now you're down in the manhole, like the chief said. Windows are blown out, bins are opened up, that, that opens up for people to be vicious.
So I would just make sure that that communication of those parameters and what we're trying to accomplish and when we set those, that's the most important thing. That was the biggest feedback we got last year, Ed, was curfew. People were frustrated with the curfew, the length of the curfew, the time, and then getting back on the bridge, why can't I get? So the rest of it, and it was the eighty-twenty, eighty percent of the people understood it, but twenty percent said, hey, look, I need to get out and look at something, so.
Well, and, and the island was so flooded last time, and even if you were out and trying to move around in your car, you would have been stuck in high water. So we don't, we look to these guys and Ed to tell us it's all clear. Until they say it's all clear, it's not safe.
Right.
So we just have to abide by that.
And thus getting the bridge back open, there's a lot of variables. And if we can't provide you water and power and basic services, if all the fire police are spread out doing assessments, we can't service, get the services that you need. We can't let you back on the island, but once we open the backup, we're saying we're open for business. And when we're open for business, that means if someone on the island helps, they want to go to beach, they want to do that, then they start calling the EOC. We'll know while they will have water, we'll get the power again. So it creates a lot of issues for us.
And Chief, just for the public, while you're standing there, there was a period of time during Florence, the nine-one-one system was down in the whole county. So, and, and if you're staying on the island, you have to realize that you might not be able to get in touch with anyone. It was down for what?
It was down for a good bit, we had to go to some backup systems and we, there was a point that you could have called nine-one-one and not gotten an answer, yes. And people have to understand that forty-five mile per hour, our, we quit responding to emergencies and it comes back on mine in the police chief's lap. So calls are not dispatched at that point, we're getting notified and then we pick and choose what we go out on after forty-five mile per hour. And then once you reach a certain wind speed, we won't go out at all. Because we can't take a crew of guys and put them out with trees coming down, lines coming down. And then a fire truck as big as it is is going to blow it over, so we have to be conscious of all that.
Maybe this is a good time for council to discuss that, that, the timing of the curfew and the close of the evacuation. What I have right now on the draft proclamation that has not yet been adopted is the evacuation begins tomorrow morning at eight, that's three September, my math is, four September, sorry. And it is complete, finished at five PM tomorrow. But the tropical storm force winds are anticipated to come, to arrive rather, on Thursday, five September at noon. So what's council's thoughts on coupling the two, that's where I'm, where I think. In other words, complete the evacuation and then commence other activities like curfew that night. Complete the evacuation on Thursday at noon.
I'm fine with that. I would think you would at least want to do it maybe eight AM on Thursday because by noon on Thursday, if you're, if you're saying you're going to complete it at noon, we could have those forty-five mile per hour winds a little bit earlier.
Your, your point is well ta, is well made. My thing was just another period of daylight in which to depart.
The updates.
I think seven or eight AM Thursday, I hear what Ed's saying, and you're going to get, we're going to get winds Thursday morning and we want everyone, if you're leaving, you need to get off before we close the bridge. And I'm a little hesitant on the curfew until the chief's saying that he does. Once the rain comes and it gets dark, okay, but I just, I had a lot of pushback from people.
Well, I mean, I think what happened last time is if you wanted to leave, we let you leave until they close the bridge. I mean, you're, you can go over that bridge until it's closed, we just can't tell you when that's going to be. So the smart thing to do if you're going to leave would be to do it tomorrow. I know that there's a lot of marinas evacuating boats out of the marinas, so there'll be a lot of people on the island tomorrow and that's the day to do it, it's today and tomorrow. Thursday probably wouldn't be a good day to do any of that. So I'm, I.
Let me, let me propose a timeline then.
These two guys are going to tell us they want a curfew when we close the bridge, is what I think they're going to say.
So let me propose this then, it begins tomorrow at eight. The mandatory evacuation begins tomorrow, four September at eight AM. And it is complete on Thursday, five September at eight AM. That's a pretty rough number.
But you can still leave.
Yeah. And, and the, right.
Right.
And the curfew goes into a place nine PM on Thursday or Wednesday?
Under their call.
Yeah, I'm looking over it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so in other words, if we don't expect, right, based on the.
What we could do is, is follow, I mean, Curie Beach, I believe what they did is they said they would hold off on the curfew and come back in session to make that curfew.
I'd rather recess, we're going to recess anyway and come back based on the conditions.
Well, I don't think we're going to recess, are we? Are we going to stay in session?
We usually do recess.
So that would be my question, are we going to have a standard meeting time each day and we'll make these decisions each day as, as we need, as needed, or?
We haven't planned to have a, a standard meeting time. I think we could just call it and have you come in if we need to.
I'd say base it on when you have white, white space in your calendar, since you start the battle rhythm tomorrow at eight. You know, it's just my recommendation.
Keep it in sync with the updates. I do have a battle rhythm, I'll send it out to you, and it does have a time on it for elected official updates. So we, I mean, we could build something in that says that.
Okay, so I've got the proclamation, Kim, I'm going to give it back to you with amendments that you've heard. Will strike the provision for curfew until further notice, council?
Yep.
Well, you can do the proclamation and then I have a non-agenda.
Yeah, once you, she's going to redo.
I just wanted to take a minute and acknowledge that Brian Stansbury's guys, over the last couple of days, I've had a number of residents reach out to me wanting the sand that you guys got over to, to the Mike Chapel Park. You cleaned the Sumter, you mowed the other ditch over there on Lake Park. And you still, I assume we're still draining down the lake, so thank you, Brian, and your guys, I mean, the town really needs to recognize the harbor.
Yeah, I am.
Thank you, Brian.
And, and to what Steve just said, to the public, this weekend and, and Labor Day yesterday was no vacation for staff. They were here all weekend, so they were here working on the storm all weekend.
Under, yeah, Ed's leadership, go ahead, Ed.
So one more thing for your proclamation, for your consideration is alcohol sales. You can put something in there for stopping alcohol sales.
Didn't the county say Wednesday at six?
Is when the ABC store is, oh, will close.
You want to tackle that when we issue a.
Oh, you mean at restaurants too?
Sure, yeah, let's do that tomorrow.
You know, well, I would say they need to have Wednesday night sales and dinner, they were not closed on Wednesdays.
Until, see, you probably noticed.
I can understand the ABC store, but I mean, I think it's, our restaurants need that last time to get some people in there.
ABC is out of our control.
And we don't want our people going stir crazy before Thursday.
Right.
Go out and get a nice dinner.
We'll link the two, expect it to be back tomorrow, all things being equal, for whatever we decide on a curfew. Perfect, okay.
Have a quick thing, but I think it's important that you remember for anybody who's staying or not staying, that on average, you should have about three or four days worth of supplies. That means about a gallon of water per person, per day. So if anybody is planning on staying, please make sure you prepare for those things. That way you are able to bunker down and can take care of yourself properly.
Yeah, and, and we're going to, I think we on council are going to refer to the town website and the town Facebook page for all the straight scoop. You know, so that, you know, at least for me, I'm not erroring a couple of hours to swear that on something. Just a couple of things, and I know that it was brought up by other members of council, construction debris. Joe Hutchison, code enforcement, has been going around the island. He went to a few places today. The link to the NCDOT website for road information, the county is going, the county has it linked now. Do, do we want to do the same, I guess, off of our page, I don't know if it makes sense?
So if anyone still has an issue with construction debris or any issue in town, are they to call four five eight two nine nine nine?
Absolutely, absolutely, you can, you can call that number and that, that's our main number here. If it's after hours today, you will have to call one of our emergency response personnel until eight AM tomorrow morning because we won't be open tonight. So I'll, I'll put those numbers out again on our Facebook page. And they're also on our website, but eight AM tomorrow, that'll be the four five eight twenty-nine ninety-nine.
And, and since we already talked about the other issues, floating docks in the harbor, apparently there's still some out there from, I think they've been out there since Florence. Do we have any ability to pull those, those floating docks in?
There were a few out there, I think we got them all moved. So we are, let's see, we're bringing our, our fire boats and our Harbor Master boats are coming in on Wednesday. So if, if there's anything out there that we need to move in, we'll, we'll need to do it either today or first thing tomorrow morning.
Ed, will we be in command of the EOC when it takes place tomorrow?
Will I?
Are you in charge of the EOC?
I'll be the instant commander from seven AM to seven PM and from seven PM to seven AM, it will be Jeremy.
So an idea that I'd recommend is maybe make a short video that tells a good basis of this because it's easier to share coming from one person versus others where it could be misconstrued and miscommunicated. With just some of these basics as well as some of the necessities, as well as what we're planning on doing for the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the discipline.
Page, let us push that. With the possibility of.
I believe it's down.
Okay, Ed, you got that, I know you got the con on that. Hey, a couple, a couple other saved rounds, Alan just stepped down. We had a resident Rodney, I think he's from Curie Beach, he's going to do, he's going to provide drone footage. He'd fly his drone up and down the beach today or tomorrow. If he can, I can't direct him to do anything, the stills in the video on town website and Facebook. And post-storm recovery with those same drones to identify places that suffered damage. National Hurricane Center is the only official forecast, it doesn't come from Facebook, unless it was posted on Facebook from the National Hurricane Center. You've secured the debris pickup, taking a look forward, Ed, the contractor who did that last time?
We have been in conversations with them, so we will be working through that. I know I contacted them earlier today and I think Brian's already been in contact with them as well.
Two more things, timing of the high tides and beach access.
Tides we will post out too, we're still in a higher than normal tides over five feet for our hard tides, so we can post those.
And Steve mentioned it earlier, the lake, is the lake down to where it needs, okay, so that, that project's been complete, okay. Anything else, council?
We're an awesome community, take care of each other.
Yeah, yeah, and you all know, a lot of people who have homes here but aren't here full-time, reach out to them, is there anything they need to do? I know I have a neighbor who I've contacted. Patio furniture and things that would become missiles in high winds can easily be secured.
And to that point, Ed, don't we have a list, and we, I know we did in the past, of the elderly or the sickly, do you have a list?
We do work with, the county does have a list and if, if there is an issue, we work directly with the county.
So if you have a loved one that needs to be put on that list, they would call town hall or?
No, they would go through, who is it with the county?
Thanks, chief. Okay, with that, I make a motion, this is a, we're motioning this first, after I read it all, obviously, Joe Dan?
The answer's yet non-agenda, but go with what you're doing first.
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, let me do this first and then we'll go non-agenda.
Yeah, I already, I already did.
I make a motion to adopt proclamation number nineteen dash twenty-two oh nine, Carolina Beach Town Council proclamation of state emergency. Pursuant to chapter two, article four, section two dash sixty-three, declaration of emergency. The Carolina Beach Town Council has determined that a state of emergency as defined in the Carolina Beach Code of Ordinances exists in Carolina Beach. Carolina Beach Town Council proclaims the existence of a state of emergency in Carolina Beach due to the approaching Hurricane Dorian. The Carolina Beach Town Council hereby orders all town law enforcement officers and all personnel to cooperate in the enforcement and implementation of the provisions of the town emergency ordinances which are set forth below. Evacuation, a mandatory evacuation will begin on Wednesday, September fourth, twenty nineteen, will begin. And all residents shall be off the island no later than Thursday, September fifth, twenty nineteen, at eight AM. Begins on the fourth at eight AM, finishes on the fifth at eight AM. Curfew, no curfew has been established at this time. Execution of emergency plan, all persons and emergency personnel within the town of Carolina Beach are ordered to comply with the emergency plan. Public shelters beginning Wednesday at ten AM, that's tomorrow, two shelters will be open. Blair Elementary, that is pet-friendly. Colocation shelter is sixty-five ten Market Street and Cottington, or that's Blair Elementary at, Kim, I can't, this is.
Yes.
Yeah, at Market Street, sixty-five ten Market Street. And Cottington Elementary School at forty-three twenty-one Carolina Beach Road. Limited food service will be available. This proclamation shall become effective this third day of September. become effective this third day of September at 2019 at 5:00 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thanks. Any, uh, non-agenda? Leanne?
No, I already brought it up.
Okay. Counsel?
I'm cool with this vote.
All right. Make a motion to recess. Um, establish a time, we would need a time to do that.
Yep.
We don't.
Yep.
Okay. Good. All right. Make a motion to recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thought we did. Okay.